It's not working. It puts a little more pressure on people because you're meant to be working, okay? So if you don't mind me, can you just hear what I'm gonna say to the rest of the Senate? And then we'll go. Mr. President, you have a quorum and you can call your council to order.
Thank you, appreciate it. We could have your attention, please. Calling the regular September 2nd council meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Jay McKay.
Here.
Snar.
Yep.
Pickert. Perkey.
Here.
Evelyn.
Here.
Learman.
Here.
Swindler.
Here.
Seeing one absent council member, what is your pleasure?
Excuse second.
We have motion to second that she be excused. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She is excused. If you will now stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. All right, pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. President, can we get your first and second on the motion to excuse?
The first was Jonathan and the second was Learman. Now if you'd just join me in a brief moment of silence. Thank you. You have before you tonight's agenda. Are there any additions or corrections? May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Swindler, second by McKay to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is accepted. You also have before you the August 19th meeting minutes. What is your pleasure?
This may be accepted as presented.
Second.
Motion by Swindler, second by Perkey. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are accepted. Also have a notice of legislative authority. We have the following notice from the Ohio Division of Electric Control. SHAI LLC 520 West Truesdale, Wilmington. This notice will be on file with the clerk of counsel. And also, we will be having a public hearing. The planning commission gave their approval on the request of petitioner Ronnie Trustee for rezoning of 1.0070 acres, more or less on Rumback Avenue, for LI Light Industrial to SC Suburban Commercial. That public hearing will be held in council chambers on October 7th, 2021 at 7:30. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Mr. President, did you say October the 7th or the 6th?
I said the 7th. Is that an incorrect date?
Our says the 6th.
Which one's correct?
The one on Thursday.
That'd be the 7th.
The 7th.
That'd be the 7th.
Alert caution.
We're new here.
All right. Any other questions? Turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope my council members are to the point. Anne is just doing an outstanding job looking at some of these neighborhoods that are getting cleaned up. But also she puts in there the simple things about, thank you Tri-Scannan. People forget to do that. I really like these reports. And again, she's doing a great job, doing the city a great job. I also have a compliment to three police officers. I had a phone call from Miles Barrer. I don't know how many of you remember him. Him and his wife Kay ran the Sears store for literally decades. They still live over on Catherine Drive. They had to go to the hospital for some routine testing in the afternoon. And being courteous, they turned their cell phones off when they go in. And then after they left the hospital, they had friends that had a new home. Invited them out to see the new house, go for supper. They're out a little late for them. They get home, there's three police officers at their house. And they go, oh my goodness, the house caught on fire, did someone break in? You know, what on earth has happened? Well, it turns out the daughter could not reach either one of them because they hadn't turned their phones back on. They called the police department and we dispatched officers to make sure they were okay. And they were fine. And they were so complimentary. Sergeant Matt Hamilton, Officer Cole Holland, and Officer Billy Foster. And those guys, again, in Miles' words, they were extremely courteous and kind. So Chief, I don't see you in here, I think you're somewhere. Make sure you give those guys a shout out. Laurel Lux Career Campus Open House is Wednesday, September the 8th, from 3:30 to 5:30 with ribbon cutting at 4:30. This event will debut the second year, the two-year renovation and expansion project. Been quite a project if you've driven out there and seen it. Community Blood Drive, Wednesday, September the 8th, held at Clint Memorial Hospital, 11 to 6:30. Appointments are encouraged. Walk-in COVID vaccinations at Clint County Health Department, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, 1 to 4. Also, the Wilmington Public Library has take-home COVID tests available for pickup during normal business hours. Corn Festival is coming up, 10 through 12 at the fairgrounds. 9/11 Ceremony, Friday, September the 10th, at 7:30 a.m. at the municipal parking lot. And at the American Legion, they are having a buffet-style breakfast, starting approximately at 8 o'clock or when we get all done up here with this ceremony. Plenty of parking either on the street or over in the municipal lot. Blaine Harding Free Outdoor Concert, Friday, September 17th, 7 o'clock. It says on Main Street.
Yes.
It's not on Sugar Tree?
Not this one.
It's part of the Wilmington College 150th Celebration. And then there's going to be the Fourth Annual Art in Soul, which is Saturday, September 18th, 10 to 4. That is on Sugar Tree. Electronic Recycling, Saturday, September 18th, from 10 to 2 p.m. At Jobs and Families Service Parking Lot, register for an appointment. And now I have the pleasure of giving a proclamation to the daughters of the American Revolution if they would come forward. And if this is the greatest document of mankind that I hold in my hand in this little booklet. And I know it's got to be the longest constitution still to force any country in the world. Correct me if I'm wrong. Yeah, it's just amazing that it can do that. That simple, that small. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2021, marks the 234th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which commemorates it. And whereas public law 917 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, John, am stand forth by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Wilmington, Ohio, to hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to affirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Congratulations. I didn't introduce anybody. Shelby?
Sure.
Shelby, don't introduce you.
Yeah, Shelby Bowman, I'm a new inductee to DAR, George Clinton chapter. This is my sister Molly. Susan Henry, Frances Sharp, and Claire Rock are also chapter members as well. Thank you for having us.
And now it's my pleasure to swear in our two newest firefighters, Aaron Herak and Mark Jones. A second, will you please come forward and bring any of your family members that you would like?
Are you doing them one at a time or together?
Going to do them together.
Okay.
Jonathan, I'm gonna bury the fuck out of you.
Thank you for coming.
Right here. Aaron, who do you have with you?
This is my wife Nikki.
Mark?
This is my wife Dara.
Well, now what I want you to do, raise your right hand.
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent upon me.
All duties incumbent upon me.
As a firefighter, paramedic.
As a firefighter, paramedic.
With the Fire Department for the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
With the Fire Department for the city of Wilmington, Ohio.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
To the best of my ability and understanding.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
This I do as I shall answer unto God.
Congratulations. Service director.
Blue pen.
Chief.
Here's a blue pen. Please don't use a not blue pen.
I don't have a fancy pencil, right?
That's fancier than wooden half. Would the fire department come up for a photo with your new numbers, please? You can stay in the picture, you're important too, I promise.
Now the safety director.
My phone's dead, will you take really good pictures of them all looking very, very stupid, stupid?
Chief, it's going to be a witness, who do you want to be your witness?
I say their spouses would be a great one for each respective one.
Of course you are. I know what you're doing.
Aaron, you're the wife.
I'm the husband.
Another lucky, cool, I knew I liked you. I'm going to do the HR. Get in a picture, see if you're okay. HR? Okay, you got what you need? Kay, smile for the photo. Look at John Hamilton. You guys look great. Hey, Mike Jones, treasure, would you let me picture with your son and the mayor, please? Mr. Mayor, would you take a picture with both the Joneses, please?
And I didn't brag on our own Mark Jones. I'm sure everybody caught on. I hope you give as many years of service to the city as you can.
Yes, amen. All right. I don't know, they stole it.
I have a sad note that I think I need to touch on just a little bit. Sunday, my wife got a call from her stepson. She lives in Brooklyn. He and his wife were on vacation in Vermont. And he actually is a Wilmington college graduate, went to work for the local sheriff's office. Out of Wilmington College, major in criminal justice. His wife, Wilmington college graduate. She went to work for Orange Fraser Press. I think she went to Zager then, got a master's. And then was hired by Random House, New York City. So they moved to the big app. And Aaron got a job with Sheriff's Department, New York City. So anyway, they were on vacation in Vermont. He wanted to go back, take a nap, got back to bed and breakfast. And his wife sent him a picture of the dog swimming in the river. And he woke up later that afternoon, his wife wasn't back, he went up looking for her. He saw her shoes along the riverbank, saw her water bottle sitting on the bench. Could not find her. By 8 o'clock, he called the authorities. And they found her body the next day. She drowned. She was 37 years old. And it's just one of those terrible, terrible tragedies. You don't expect it to happen to your own family. And Nancy is in Vermont right now with her stepson. Anyway, I knew that, and actually, you know, of course they have social media and I don't know how much everybody had read about it. So anyway, I just wanted to tell you what was going on. They're having actual funeral services in Vermont tomorrow. But it's just one of those things that, boy, every time you leave the house, tell your wife you love her. That's for sure. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Auditor Vance.
Nothing to say there, Mr. President.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Schottiger.
I don't have any action items tonight, Mr. President. But as we've discussed multiple times, we have a big project on the horizon. We're going to build a new wastewater plant. And we've gone through this process over the past, how long have we been going through this, Rick?
February.
Since when?
February.
February of?
This year.
This year. With our criteria engineer, Kerry Huggins, who's with Pride A. And as you guys, you've met Kerry before. He's the quarterback that was like helping us through this whole selection process, the interview process. I think I said at a previous council meeting, you know, this wasn't 15-minute interviews. These were drilling, you know, this was, this was one heck of a process getting to where we are today. And we have selected a design build team. And we are happy to introduce them, but I'm going to turn it over to Kerry first because he's our criteria engineer. He's the one that guided us and helped us through this process. So Kerry, if you want to step up and help us and tell us where we are in the process and then introduce the team, that'd be great.
That's what I'll do, thank you, Brian, appreciate that. I did put this schedule with your backups there if you wanted to look at that. I thought I'd give you just a real brief update on what we've accomplished since February 1st. I started as your design criteria engineer on February 1st. That's when we kicked off this project, so that's been a short seven months. And we've accomplished quite a bit since then. This schedule is the same schedule that we put together earlier this year and we've been on track the entire time up to this point. Just some things I wanted to point out. One thing that Brian, Rick, and Paul told me early on, says Kerry, we're relying on you to minimize the risk to the city of Wilmington. He made that very clear, okay? That third item that you see there, Risk Management Plan, that was a very important thing to the city of Wilmington and the staff. And that's something that I took personally. And we continue to watch the risk on this project to minimize that as much as possible. It's very important. So I wanted to emphasize that in the schedule. The fourth item was the environmental assessment survey. That was all the work that was done at the Textron site where the new wastewater plant would be built. As you know, it was brownfield project, a lot of contamination air in the past, it's all cleaned up now. But there was a lot of work that we had to do to get ready to build a wastewater treatment plant. We accomplished that from the period of March and April. If you remember in February, it was very snowy, very cold. We did a whole lot done on site in February. Then in March and April, we knocked all those required items, these are state required items, okay? And item five is the design criteria package. We put together a 2,100-page package which lists all the design criteria that the design build team has to meet, okay? It's everything from technical specs, contract requirements, design plans, conceptual plans. Those were all in that 2,100-page document. We accomplished that over a span of four months. And then, as Brian alluded to on the procurement, we started seeking a design build team in March. We prepared the request for qualifications. The city received qualifications. Well, I'd like to back up one step. There were eight design build teams that were interested in this project that came out to the site in February, in March. And I gave them tours, talked about the project, I met with the operators. So there were eight teams that were interested. In March, we issued RFQs. In April, six teams responded, okay? Then the committee all met, shortlisted that down to three teams. That was a very long process to get down to three teams. They were all very good teams, okay? Then what we did was issue a request for proposals to the three shortlisted teams the next month. They responded to that in the middle of July. Interviews were held with those three teams, July 30th and August 2nd, if I got those dates right. And the selection was made shortly thereafter. So here we are at the beginning of September. A month ago, you've made your selection for the Peterson Construction and Arcadis team. We've accomplished all of that in seven months. It's quite a bit of room. The last thing on this I want to point out was number 10. Through this entire process, we're helping the city with your permitting, all of your permitting. Not only permitting through the city and the county, but also through the state, whether it's EPA or Department of Development or building permits as well. So we're helping the city on that. And then all the funding. Rick and I have been working on funding for the last two months, just trying to get some of this ARCO money and whatever money that's going to become in the EDA. We're talking to these people in Chicago and Ohio, we're trying to find money for you. So that process isn't going to stop, it's going to go on for months, as you know. So that gives you an idea of how fast we went on the schedule. The second page is just an aerial plan of the Textron building and about where the new plant would be in that general area. It's subject to change, of course. Just want to indicate that that big building there is scheduled to be demolished here starting in October sometime. So right into the year, early next year, it will be gone. And then the design of the plant can proceed. The third schematic, the third page, is just the existing plant. Any of those hatch tanks that you see are just tanks either re-d demolished or repurposed. So we're going to reuse as much of the existing plant as we can as far as the project, okay? Any questions for me? So Peterson Construction is here. If you guys want to step up, I'm going to let them introduce themselves. They have a couple slides, I think. Did I just hit this?
In theory, yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you, Kerry. Appreciate being here. I'm Rod Canabki with Peterson Construction, vice president of our Water and Wastewater Group. I'm here with Mike Fritschy, our senior project manager. We could be more thrilled to be a part of your project and really looking forward to our project being kicked off. So Kerry asked us to just give you guys a little bit of background on our firm. So if you guys, about a few minutes before the Buckeyes meeting, we'll run through just a little bit. And if you guys have any questions, interrupt us. So I've got a few slides. Trying to get to the next slide.
She's got a really good view of you guys and over the table. Really flattering.
Camera adds 10 pounds, sorry.
COVID added 20 to me, so that's good, it's great.
Before you start, Rob, just real quick, a little background on me. I was, I've been with company for 22 years, it'll be 23 years in December. I graduated from Bowling Green State University in the construction management program in December of 98 and hired on with Peterson right out of college. I started off doing schools and treatment plants for the first few years, and then I strictly went to treatment plants. So I've been doing water wastewater treatment plants for the last 20 years. So, and I'll be the project manager on the Wilmington project, so just a little background.
Great. So I've been with Petersons for 26 years. Done nothing but water wastewater plants during that time. Graduated from University of Dayton, so familiar with the area. The north side, south of Lima. So I don't know if anyone's. 1949, we're annually doing about $150 million worth of work. We do, like you said, a lot of water and wastewater plant work. We also have a general building division that does schools, prisons, hospitals, those types of facilities. So just a slight French. As far as our treatment plant experience, in the last 20 years, we've done about $800 million with the treatment plants. We're strong and self-performing a lot of that work with a number of employees that we have. We have a lot of expertise. So we do a lot of work ourselves. And we are very competitive on our pricing. We have a 90% success rate on bidding. So we pride ourselves in being able to do the work for less than our competitors. Some of the projects that we've done in the area, some of the treatment plants, so we've done work at Sabina Wastewater Plant, Greenfield, Sugar Creek, which is Bel Brook, Medway, Springfield, Beaver Creek. We've also done some general building construction in the area. Quite a few years back, we built the Clint County Jail, so just down the street. We just finished a large project up in Clark, for Clark Shawnee School, which is south of Springfield. And we did a large school at Cedar Cliff, which was in Cedarville. Your project is an alternative delivery design build project. We've done close to $200 million worth of alternative delivery. So we think we know what we're doing with getting involved in the design-based project, so. Next slide. But we are local. Field superintendent, this is a photo of our field superintendent, Rodney Bailey, he lives in Waynesville. So Rodney's going to be building this project once it gets, once the design's completed. Rodney's done a lot of work in this area, a lot of the projects that we previously mentioned, Rodney built those projects, so.
Yes.
Rodney's really excited about being so close to home, so. I think Rodney's going to get along real well with the plant guys out here. And then last slide. So this is a design build project. Peterson's expertise is construction. We have a teaming partner, Arcadis. This is Brad Olson from Arcadis. Arcadis's specialty is designing treatment plants. So we worked together with Arcadis to complete the design. But Arcadis is what they do for a living, is design water and wastewater plants. So Brad just lives down the road in Mainville, Ohio, and was here earlier for the kickoff meeting. meeting. Arcadis is a worldwide company. Brad's in their Cincinnati office, supported also by their Columbus office. So yeah, sorry, we're engineers, we're not marketing people, so. We're boring engineers, so. But yeah, we're open for any questions that you have.
They respond to good knockback jokes, so.
Any questions, anyone?
What is the contractual relationship between Arcadis and Peterson?
So
Do you contract directly with each of you individually, or is it a group?
Nope. So there's just one contract between the city and Petersons, and then Arcadis is a sub-consortium of ours. So ultimately, Peterson is responsible for design, construction, successful completion of your project, so if you guys have one, the buck stops with Mr. Fritchy.
You talked about your history a few minutes ago. Give me a little tidbit.
Okay.
I used to have bone construction, got me wooded against Peterson for school building back in the 1960s. But more interestingly, you bid on this building.
Is that correct?
And I hope you get it, but you didn't.
Sounds like that might have been before our time.
Are you calling him old?
No, no.
He's called you old!
Experience.
Oh, okay.
Seasoned.
We talked about risk management for a few minutes, and as far as risk is concerned, as far as the city, I don't want to ask you a lot of questions and belay this, but nonetheless, this is a huge project, a top 10,000 people. And if we don't ask the questions, then we're not doing our job. This would be a bonded project.
Sure.
Do you bond your subs? I know you do most of your work in-house, but do you bond yourselves?
Sometimes. Depends on who we're dealing with. To be honest with you, we like to deal with people that we trust, know that are financially solvent, that we work with often. So there's an expression, if you have to bond them, do you really want to hire them? So the part of the process is pre-qualification of subcontractors. So through that process, we hope to vet out any sub that has questionable finances or too much work or a history of poor quality work. So the idea of the process is we're only taking pricing from the best subs and people that we have a good history with. So it depends on the work, I guess I should say that, but Wilmington is covered by our bond, so if a sub that we hire goes out of business, that's our problem and not the city's problem.
As to the design team, errors in emissions policies that are true to the city of Wilmington?
Our, I don't know if I stood in going down that road, so we just want to get your job done and we got to work this.
Which was one of the many factors that we considered. No, I understand that, I appreciate it. You were involved in litigation in 1995, one OSHA violation.
That's more than 20 years ago.
So that brings up
Two more years' time, right?
And nobody likes to have problems like that, but have you had recent OSHA violations that are of serious nature that we should be aware of?
No.
Any of your company principals or the company itself involved in any litigation that we're not aware of?
No.
Anybody else have questions? Time right in.
Nick, we drilled these guys.
In the design, I do. I'm at the government level, but if I don't ask the questions, then I'm doing my job.
But they've already been through the fire and back out and back in it and back out.
There's always been kind of, as to the design process, there's always been kind of a toll and tug and push and a relationship between the EPA and their requirement for best available technology versus the tried and true technology.
Design criteria was not met in the finished facility, okay? So I mean, that's one of the advantages of having a design build team. If there's issues along the way, they're responsible to fix them in common compliance.
Yeah, I guess my question really is, where the design flows met and the water that came out at the end of the pipe beat EPA's criteria for clean water standards?
Yes. Yep.
I only have just one question from your presentation. You highlighted 90% success in the bids that you.
Yep.
Would you say that's because you do so much in-house with your team, or are you really selective in the kinds of projects you bid so that you're just kind of staying in this specialty Wilmington thing helps you accomplish that?
I think we have some of the most efficient field personnel in the industry, so we can, I think we do the same job for less than $1,000. I think that's a big part of it, but we are selecting projects that we're good at. Like your project, this is, everything on your project, we've done that many times, have learned a lot in the past, know how to do it the most efficient. We treat our subs with respect, knowing that we're going to have a long-time relationship with these folks, so many times we refer pricing to our subs that helps us out on a good day. So I think we have it figured out, I think we've got a good recipe, but that answers your question.
Yeah, it's certainly comforting to know that we're pretty similar to a lot of your clients.
Yes.
Doing very similar projects.
Yeah, I mean, this is understandable, extremely large project, the city of Wilmington, you're making a large investment, but we've been there with many similar clients that this is the large, you know, the project that we built for them was the largest project they've ever had. And we have probably one or two of those projects a year. We just finished, Mike just finished a $37 million job for the city of Lima, eight months ahead of schedule, and under budget. That was by far the biggest project that they've ever had. So we take our responsibility to ensure this. Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. I appreciate you being willing to answer the hard questions.
No, no problem. I was waiting for the hard one.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Get out of here without unplugging any of your stuff.
Mess up, see what happens.
I don't want to, you're scaring me.
I've heard that more than once in my life, so it's okay.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much for arranging that. Very thorough presentation, everybody that came.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Heck, we saw you virtually the last time, didn't we?
That's right. Yes, a couple virtual ones.
I like this.
Yeah, I much prefer myself. Thanks again.
I just want to reiterate, this wasn't something that I was taking lightly. This was something that, I know Rick lost hours and hours of sleep, I lost hours of sleep, Kerry lost hours of sleep, you guys, I'm sure, lost hours of sleep. This was not a decision I was taking lightly, and this was a strenuous, competitive process. I think you guys would admit that it was very competitive and
Very.
Very stressful.
Very.
And I'm proud of where we are right now because of that process. In fact, we met with the people, we finished second today, and they even appreciated the fact that we were very, it was a competitive process, the way that we handled it professionally, having a selection committee, scoring these, asking the tough questions, and at the end of the day, they even respected our decision to go with Peterson. And I'm just very proud of this decision, and I know it's going to work out for all of us, so that's all I want to say.
If it doesn't, we'll stick Mary Kay on them. It's fine, it'll work out great.
Thank you all.
You're laughing like I'm joking, Greg.
Thank you.
It was a really good process.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good folks. Speaking of scoring, we don't have cable for that, do we?
No, but we do have a zero to zero, 10 minutes left on the quarter, zero to zero.
All right. Moving into council committee reports. City Revitalization Committee, Mr. Snar.
No report, Mr. President.
Mr. President, may I add, though, to his committee?
Sure.
Councilperson Snar has a great student who is referred as a mayor's office intern. Her name is Lucy. She started this week, and she's as brilliant as we would have expected, and she is helping with some of the CRC policy that kind of got stuck in the bottleneck, so hopefully Professor Snar, Dr. Snar, will be able to present some of Councilperson Snar's work through one of his students coming up very shortly, so we're very grateful. The mayor's office is very grateful for his recommendation of intern.
I saw her today, and she said she loves to come down.
Put it on a billboard, please.
This is the Lucy I know, right?
This is our Lucy.
Yeah, our Lucy.
She's great. She's very, very
She's a good Quaker.
Yep. She's great.
All right. Thank you for adding that. City Services Committee, Mr. Evelyn.
No report, Mr. President.
Finance Committee, who's going to handle finance tonight?
I can.
Whoever is going to handle, step up.
So we've got two resolutions and an ordinance, and they're in your package. The first one is Resolution 2138, we're asking for three readings. Is someone that can tell us a bit about this?
This is what the county, this is the one we're talking about. The county presents to us annually, and it is their estimate of what the levies will produce and what our revenues will be for those levies.
I'm thinking of what the sinking fund is.
That's one, that is one that is the Those two are the two that says police pension, and the other one says sinking fund, is the fire pension. It was named, that sinking fund, before my time.
Poorly named.
Poorly named.
But I've never seen
Badly named, poorly named, don't know why, but that is the other pension, and so that's a little bit of realistic tax of those.
Does anybody have questions, Mary Kay? If not, a motion to give first reading only of Resolution 2138 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Snar, second by Swindler, first reading, Resolution 2138, all in favor, six of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Yeah, so the regulations give Resolution 2128 second, third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second by the same two folks, for suspension of the rules. May we have roll call, please?
Snar.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Swindler.
Yes.
J.K. McKay.
Yes.
May we have second, third reading, please?
I know you did.
A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Move for passage of Resolution 2138.
Second.
Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
Perky.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Swindler.
Yes.
J. McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2138 passes.
Okay, our second one is special assessments, and that's Resolution 2139, right by 38th in the packet.
These are your past due utility bills and/or code enforcement where we had to do the mitigation of the issue, so those charges are collected. So Exhibit A is your utility, and Exhibit B is your code enforcement mitigation charges.
Any questions on this? If not, I motion to give the first reading only on Resolution 2139 by title only.
Second.
Motion by Snar, second by Swindler, first reading, Resolution 2139, all in favor, six of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
A resolution approving special assessments pursuant to Sections 923.09, .03, 1701.08, .701.09, .10, and 1729.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wilmington and declaring it a no.
I move to suspend the rules and regulations and give Resolution 2139 second, third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second for suspension of the rules, roll call, please.
Perky.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Swindler.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
May we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution approving special assessments pursuant to Sections 923.09, .03, 1701.08, .09, .10, and 1729.03 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wilmington and declaring it a no.
I move for passage of Resolution 2139.
Second.
Motion, second for passage, roll call, please.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Swindler.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 2139 passes.
Our final one is ordinance, where's the back of your package? It's 2133 supplemental appropriations, police fund, people's ability.
I just saw, I got this, sorry, Mike. It just says the line is meeting the above amount due to expense being higher than anticipated full pay bills. I don't know if you have specifics on what bills. I just
Yes, going back and looking at the budget I presented last year, it appears that I left out some lots of the AT&amp;T, which is our internet provider for our cars. The CAT RMS server that we use requires a large amount of data. We switched over, and I miscounted from last year's budget, but the data is need because there's continuous mapping inside the cars and shows up inside dispatch, so they can monitor where the cars are. So it was a human error, that's why.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Motion to give first reading only, ordinance 2133 by title only.
Second.
Motion, second for first reading ordinance 2133, all in favor, six of us saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
Motion to suspend the rules and regulations, give ordinance 2133, second, third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion, second for suspension of the rules, roll call, please.
Leirman.
Yes.
Swindler.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Thank you. May we have second, third reading, please?
An ordinance making supplemental appropriations.
I move for passage of ordinance 2133.
Second. Have a motion by Snar, second by McKay, for passage ordinance 2133, roll call, please.
Swindler.
Yes.
McKay.
Yes.
Snar.
Yes.
Perky.
Yes.
Evelyn.
Yes.
Leirman.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2133 passes. Any other action?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee, Mr. Perky.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have one ordinance this evening, spelling out updates to the employee holiday policy. It's spelling out updates to the employee holiday policy. I'm sure you all have a chance to look through it. We added Juneteenth as a, as a holiday, and then specified how weekend holidays can be observed as time off before or after the weekend, so. Mary, do you have anything you want to add?
No, it's mirroring this year's observing of the Juneteenth, just like the county's for just continuity. And then moving forward, very similar as it had been before. Previous legislation had sanitation department in separate pieces of legislation, when we found out that they couldn't operate effectively with back-to-back holidays. So it's rescinding the previous legislations, finding all of the holiday legislation in one piece of, one piece of legislation, which we.
I was like, I don't get it.
It's, yeah, it can get really muddy, and then you're looking in four different ordinances for which employee it applies to. So this was the cleanest way. Mr. Munchen, HR Director, helped merge it, along with our law director and myself. And I think this presents the best to council to understand, and for the employees.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll move for a first reading ordinance 2134, by title only.
Second.
Motion by Perky, second by Swindler. First reading ordinance 2134, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have first reading, please?
An ordinance repealing ordinance 4935, 0-18-72, and adopting a schedule to provide for the observance of legal holidays for city employees, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and regulations, and give ordinance 2134 a second and third reading by title only.
Second.
Motion second for suspension of the rules, roll call, please.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Swindler?
Yes.
Thank you. May we have second, third reading, please?
An ordinance repealing ordinance 4935, 0-18-72, and adopting a schedule to provide for the observance of legal holidays for city employees, and declaring an emergency.
Move to pass ordinance 2134, red.
Second.
Motion second for passage, roll call, please.
Snar?
Yes.
Perky?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Swindler?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2134 passes.
That's all, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public Works Committee, Ms. Swindler.
Just one item, Resolution 2137, that authorizes the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit our application to participate in OTWC state capital improvement funds to execute our contracts for wastewater treatments. No questions?
This, the title references the transportation improvement program, but this has nothing to do with transportation improvement. What do you mean by that?
Right. Yeah, they give you a.
That's our template.
Yeah, they give you the legislation that they have to adopt.
They say and/or.
Right.
So you just keep their title.
Any other questions? If not, I would move to first reading on Resolution 2137, by title only.
Second.
Motion by Swindler, second by Snar, for first reading, Resolution 2137, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May we have first reading, please?
A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required, and declaring an emergency.
I move that we suspend the rules and regulations to give this item second and third reading by title only.
Second. Motion by Swindler, second by McKay, for suspension of the rules. Roll call, please.
Perky?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Swindler?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Thank you. May we have second, third reading, please?
A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required, and declaring an emergency.
Move for passage.
Second. Motion second for passage, roll call, please.
Perky?
Yes.
Evelyn?
Yes.
Learman?
Yes.
Swindler?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Snar?
Yes.
Resolution 2137 passes. I gave that second to McKay, by the way, in case you didn't.
Okay, thank you.
There was kind of a double up there.
That is all I have. Thank you very much.
Solid waste recycling, Mr. McKay.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. All right. Under reports to council, you have the income tax report, August of '21, and code enforcement report, August of '21. Your pleasure.
Will they be accepting this presentation? Second.
Motion second to accept the reports as presented, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Reports are accepted. We now move into the portion of the meeting that's open to the public. Anyone wishes to address council, please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing no one.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can we have a point of clarification? Who's seconded the reports to council? I have J. McKay as the first, I didn't catch the second.
Learman?
Learman, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome to do that, anytime you don't get it.
Thank you.